Okay, Adam Wills, can you hear me? Test number four. Okay, he can hear me. We're all good.
Paul, we're good? Okay. Please. Okay. Okay, good morning. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. Just before I get into some opening remarks, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Stan Kumorik. My, uh, I'll be your chair this morning. My fellow panel members on my left is Natalia Popovic. On my left closer to me is Laura Alderson. On my near right is Rick Ross and on my far right is Bill Dalton. I'd also like to introduce Barbara Bitosik, our manager here at Atol Bico. Okay, the Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning that apply to property, permissions to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consents to sever property to create new lots. I'd like to do a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge the land we are meeting on is a traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnabi, the Chipewa, the Houdinashni, the Windat Peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississauga Credit. The nature for today's hearing, Committee of Adjustment public hearing, is now conducted in a hybrid and in-person virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, while others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx, an online digital platform. The meetings are also streamed on the City of Toronto YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may do so on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connected with their computer, tablet, smartphone, or telephone and have the option of participating via video or audio only. All virtual participants will automatically be muted on entry. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator, one person at a time. Those participating by video appearance will be panelists when your item is being during this time. You're killed. You will only be visible during your five-minute allotted time. At all other times, your video will be labeled, and you will be reinstated as an attendee. For both in-person and virtual participation, the Committee of Adjustment staff will share and submit it in accordance with the guideline. Those are not allowed to use shared or any other panelist controlling their video appearance. The decisions of the committee, people attending in person today, the copy of the decision on an application must fill the revision request card, and the participating virtually need best for a decision by email. Please ensure that you include your name, address, and email as Committee of Adjustment and the Toronto Local Appeal Body, the notifications, and appeal by email. If you do not agree with the committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto Local or in some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, third parties are able as essential legislation. Now only the Minister of Municipal Affairs, specified persons and public bodies are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee of Adjustment. The instructions are set out at the bottom of the decision of the committee. Our procedure today, I will call each item as listed in the agenda. When your where application is unconsisted, the agent or applicant may proceed with the petition if desired. When the committee requires a presentation, applicants are advised to let the chair know that they wish to speak. The committee may ask questions and undertake the matter in their decision. Each speaker and applicant agent will be given a max five minutes to address the committee. I will call you or at your five-minute mark. And any person, sorry, the presentation material, as I mentioned, must have been submitted by email in advance of the hearing. Staff members cannot accept material today. When addressing, please state your name and address. Please remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. Will proceed first and make the presentation to the committee that we can entertain revision if they are substantial to ensure that the revised application is accurate and all those entitled to notice on the application are informed of the changes. Then individuals either in support or opposition of the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we first call on speakers in the hearing room and then those online. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have finished their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant and agent will be given an opportunity to rebut, but only those issues that were raised by the previous speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion, and the application will then be taken into committee for a decision. Okay, that's the end of my opening remarks. Now, I'd just like to ask if any committee members or staff have any declarations of interest on any of the items on today's agenda?
Mister Dalton? For item fifteen.
Okay.
I've recently done work in that area, so I'm going to.
Excuse yourself?
Excuse myself from it because I shouldn't be adjudicating on it.
You might be able to get out early then, given it's the last item. You might, oh, you might not be able to get out.
I can't.
No?
No.
Okay.
I'll just hang out in the back.
We'll get you to leave for the item. Anyone else? No? Okay. I'd like to get a confirmation of the minutes of the previous hearing from February the eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five. September. Wrong note there, September eleventh.
I'll move a motion.
Thank you, Mister Dalton. Is there a second or? Ms. Alderson, all in favor? Okay, the minutes are approved from the September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five hearing.
Mister Chairman, excuse, excuse me. There's a couple of people that just joined last minute, and two of them are not on my list, so I just want to confirm which item that they are speaking on.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm going to try to unmute a Rick Leong. Rick Leong, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, I can. Just one second.
Okay. I can hear you too, but can you tell me what item you're here to speak on?
I am here for five ninety, Horner.
Five ninety.
Which is item number.
Okay.
Second last one, which is.
Fourteen.
Seventeen.
Okay, and since you're not on the list, what address are you representing? Or what's your address? Sorry.
Oh, what's my address, which is twenty-seven, ten, Fourteenth Avenue, Macam.
Wait a minute, are you working with the agent?
From that square. Yes, I'm the agent.
You're the agent, but not Mengdezhen? Okay.
Yeah.
Why didn't you pre-register following the instructions?
I, I did, I think it's, well, Mengdi, he, he kind of have an emergency right now, so that's why I came and.
Well, you're supposed to register yourself because the other person didn't register either. So in the future, please make sure you follow the instructions so that we're not delaying things at the hearing. Thank you.
Okay, sure.
There's another person that came in, a Rob Dunlap. Uh, one second. Rob Dunlap, can you hear me? Please don't mute and unmute yourself. Let me do that for you. So I'll try that again. Okay, so there's a, there's a Rob Dunlap that's online who I cannot unmute, probably a setting on their end, but they're not on the list anyway. Is there a Sobeda Duarte present?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, and you're here for two Blaketon.
Yes, and I registered at the last minute, but I registered.
Yeah, I have you here. Thank you.
Okay.
Sorry about that, Mister Chairman.
No worries, thank you. The beauty of doing in-person and online at the same time. Okay, so moving on to the agenda, Madam Secretary of Treasury, I believe there are no files to be closed, but we do have a couple of deferral requests.
Yes, Mister Chair, items six and ten.
Okay, so if we can address item six first then. Just trying to find who the speaker is. Jonathan Netta? Is Jonathan online?
Yes, yes, good morning, Mister Chair and committee members.
Good morning, sir. You were requesting a deferral?
Yes, that's correct. Yes.
Okay, and that's to facilitate some changes that may be more in line with what your neighbors are looking for?
That's correct. Yeah, ju- just to explain briefly, yeah, I would like to request a deferral in order to make some adjustments particularly to the rear deck. The homeowners have taken very responsible efforts, reaching out to all the surrounding neighbors and obtaining their feedback on the proposed designs. Many of the neighbors were very helpful and supportive, including the neighbor immediately to the west, who has provided some very helpful recommendations, which we've certainly worked into our revised designs. And we do have revised designs to date, but I would still like to defer just so there's sufficient time to circulate the drawings. Yeah, if you have any questions at this time, feel free to ask.
No worries. Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak to this item?
Yes, Mister Chairman, there's a Julia Wall online, which I'm going to unmute right now. Julia, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. That sounds great. We'd be happy to have the opportunity to review the revised designs.
Okay, thank you.
Online, thank you.
Sure, I'm assuming there's no one else.
There's nobody else, Mister Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, we can unmute Jonathan, and let's just take it to the committee as well for a decision.
I'll move Mister Chair to, to defer this matter to allow for consultation with neighbors.
Thank you, Mister Popovic. Is there a second or?
I'll second that.
I think Rick beat you to it. All in favor? Okay, item six is deferred.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Item ten, Tatiana. Oh, good morning. I never know where to look up or down.
Mister Chairman, just to let you know, there are many area resident speakers on this item, including, including three who are not on your list.
Okay.
So we can get to those at the end or however you wish.
Well, maybe we can get a representative up or just show of hands or anyway, we'll, we'll deal with that when we get to it. Tatiana, you're requesting a, a deferral?
Yes. We would like to request a deferral for hearing at this time. We received on September the sixteenth transportation report in which is noted requirement for forty centimeters road widening along the north side of the lot. Transportation services also requested in their report that the application should be deferred at this time. We also, we would like to, in fact, to produce the revised plans and to address the requirements noted in the report, and also to obtain the updated zoning notice after revision of the plans. We had also communication with the city planning, and they recommended that zoning notice should be revisited and updated. We hope to receive your, sorry, your approval to defer hearing on our proposal at this time.
Okay, so you understand that you may need to change your variances because of the dedication as well?
Yes, road widening dedication will change.
Given how many people are here in opposition, you may also want to take an opportunity to process some of your changes before coming back.
Yes, of course.
Perfect, thank you. So we have a number of speakers on this item. I'm not sure if everyone wants to come up, but I think what I'd like to do is, can I just get a show of hands of who's here for item ten? Okay. Online, let, let me deal with the people here first. So I'm assuming none of you would be opposed to the idea of deferring this item to another time?
Why is it not canceled?
Yeah, why is it not canceled?
If you want to speak, come on up and give us your name.
I mean, seems like one hand doesn't know what the other hand is.
Can I get your name, please?
Sorry, it's Ron McAllister at two A Blaketon.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's pretty obvious here, the Land and Property Survey Unit and the Engineering Construction Services Division has advised that a point four meter widening is required, and so the transportation review would like to defer this application at this time. So why wasn't that done before these people were trying to build a house? Why is the cart before the horse?
That's pretty common for this process because once they realize that there is a request for a variance or a severance, then they put in place their conditions. So if they don't know someone's requesting something, they can't make that.
And I guess deferrals are pretty common too then, eh, when people come up here?
Yep.
Because, I mean, it's, it's a little bit frustrating because we get the letter for the twenty-fifth to come, and there's a whole host of people here. There's about another hundred people that I know. I've got signatures from the, from the neighborhood. People aren't very happy about this piece of property that's going in there. It's a monstrosity. And so people take time off work. We come here, and then it's deferred. Isn't there a better system that we could devise where the entire street is?
If you've got suggestions to the province or the, or the city, please suggest it to them. We, we follow the process that we have in place.
Okay.
And I would take this as an opportunity for your group to get together and discuss and strategize your next steps.
Yeah, and we've, and we, yeah, that's an ongoing process. So.
So, I mean, hopefully they'll come, the applicant will come back with a better proposal.
Right. I, I can just tell you, from, from East Mall all the way to Dundas Street, which is over two kilometers, there's not one building, well, there's only one building that exceeds two stories. Only one building.
Well, I'm not going to get into the merits of it because if you do that now, we will be here all morning.
Okay, all right.
But I think, you know, the process is what it is. I mean, it flushes things out.
Right.
And this gives you an opportunity to, to get another group together, to discuss with the applicants, to make your position perfectly clear to, to the applicant as well.
Now, part of the challenge is that the, the, the notifications that go out only go out to properties that are seventy meters away from.
Correct, but if you're here in person now and you fill out the card, doesn't matter where you live, you will get it.
Right.
You'll get the next notice.
Because I can tell you that the seventy meters, you know, it encompasses several people on our street, but there's literally over a hundred people who would have liked to have seen this and who are in dead set against this kind of, of construction.
If you've got a group together, reach out to them, they can all now get on the mailing, on the mailing list by getting that card filled out.
And then how does this work in terms of the next meeting? Like, can they?
Everyone who fills out the card today will get the notice for the next meeting.
For the next meeting, okay. And then could that be in a month or two months or, who knows?
Who knows? We don't know how long the applicant's going to take to reapply.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Just to clarify, we notify within sixty meters, not seventy.
Okay. I still remember the feet, so I didn't chime in on the meters.
Yeah, so for whoever's here in person, if you got a notice originally in the mail because you live with, you own a property within two hundred feet of the property, you will get another notice in the future. If you're outside of that boundary, but you want to stay informed, fill out one of those cards, and once it's ready to be rescheduled, we'll send you a notice.
Okay, is there anyone else who wants to speak, or could I just get in a, get a show of hands of if everyone's in favor of doing the deferral today?
Is there opportunity to cancel it? The only thing is.
Come on up. You'll start with your name, please.
Mike Warehan.
Okay. You're not on the list, so I'm going to need your address. Oh, you are, there you are, okay, yep.
One Blaketon, right across the street. I'm asking, are, is there an opportunity to deny it right now?
We would have to, we would have to go through the full hearing to do a refusal.
So all the notes came after, the transportation notes came after the fact. So we're all in the same boat to, to talk about what they have right now. They had the opportunity to review it, to hire their appropriate people.
I, I can't, I can't speak for transportation.
I'm not speaking, I'm talking about even the other bylaws that they ask. Their referral is just not based upon transportation, it's about other pending bylaws that are coming through the pipeline. That's what they're asking for. There are other bylaws that are coming through the pipeline, and to me, this is a delay. We have the bylaws in front of us, we can talk to the bylaws in front of us. I'm here to talk against the project. I'm here to say that it's oversized and it doesn't meet the bylaw requirements.
Okay, if you're, if you're against the deferral, we can take your, you know, your recommendation around that.
Yeah.
And we will vote as a panel on whether we're going to defer it or not.
No problem. So I'd like to make note that I am against the deferral.
And you would like the thing to proceed as it is?
As it is right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else who is opposed to the deferral?
Mister Chairman, we do have some people that are online. So if, if there's nobody else in person, please come up to the podium, please.
Avinash Baskar, one A Blaketon, which is right opposite to the property. I'm not sure if I can speak to the existing plan since I don't know if we are deferring or not, but.
At this point, we're deciding whether we're going to hear the thing at all.
Because I, I have to talk to the proposed plan itself, so I don't know if I'm able to do that because.
I'm not asking you to, to speak to, to the application. We're giving you an opportunity to express your opinion as to whether this item should be deferred or not.
Yeah, I'm opposed to the deferral.
You're opposed to the deferral?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Mister Chairman, in that case, I'm going to move on to the people who are online. So I understand that there is Doris Tam who also wants to speak to this, and I see her online, but for some reason, she did not authenticate her microphone during the login process. So Doris, if you hear this, please log out and log back in, and please authenticate your microphone if given the prompt. In the meantime, we can move on to Sobeda Duarte.
Hi, um, can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning. I am not quite familiar with the process. I'm not sure if.
We need you to state your name and your address.
Sorry, my name is Sobeda Duarte. I live in eighty-one Charleston Road.
Okay, so what we're looking at right now is whether to defer this item to another time or whether, or whether we want to hear it today. So we just want to get your input.
And the deferral will give enough time to the developers to correct and comply with the law.
Well, we're going to give them a chance to change their application and come back with something better or certainly different.
And opposed to this deferral means that I am not happy with the developer and I don't want this property to be built?
Well, if you're opposed to the deferral, you want them to go forward with the hearing today rather than coming back with something different.
And do we have time to go to the hearing today with them?
The hearing would be right now.
Okay.
If you don't want it to happen right now, if you want it to be deferred, then we'd want to get your opinion on that.
I'm opposed to the deferral.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Chairman, there is another person here, Marietta Lenati. They are also not on your list, a last-minute addition. Marietta, can you hear us?
Um, yes, I can hear you.
Okay, so please, please state your full name and address and answer questions from the chair.
My full name is Marietta Lenati, and I live in twelve Swan Avenue.
Okay, so at this point, we're just gauging whether people are in favor or opposed to the requested deferral by the applicant so that they could come back with a different application.
So this is the first time for me attending a meeting like this, and just like Sobeda, I do have few questions. If we oppose the deferral, again, once again, that means we're giving them a chance to come back with another plan, right?
No, if you support the deferral, you're giving them a chance to come back with another plan.
Okay, and if we oppose it, we are completely against, like, everything they're, they're planning to do with.
Well, essentially, we're getting your opinion. We, as a panel, will vote to decide whether it's going to be deferred or not. We're just getting your input as to how you feel as a member of the public.
And once again, can you state my options clearly, please, and thank you.
You're either in support of the deferral or you oppose the deferral.
I oppose the, the deferral.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else online?
There's Doris Tam, but I can't unmute her. I don't know, I think she might be just observing.
That's fine. Okay. So just for those who haven't spoken in the room, can I get a show of hands of who is in favor of this item being deferred? And who is opposed to it being deferred? Okay, thank you.
So Paul, what about Olga Helia and Hitcham?
They are for other items?
No, they're on this item.
Oh, sorry, Olga Jalani, yes, yes. My mistake. Olga Jalani is also another person who's online.
Yep. Olga Jalani, eight thirty-seven Blaketon Road. Good morning. If I could just ask, I think there's additional people that you might have missed. If you could just double-check that list.
Yeah, you're right. I have a Helia Ralph and Hitcham Alhalabi as well that are waiting online.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you. I think I am opposed to the deferral for the exact same reasons stated before, but I really appreciate that you guys have clarified specifically as to how the process works. I think it's very helpful for kind of the layman, the neighbor, the, the neighborhood.
Okay, just, I just want to clarify for people that are chiming in on this, that because there's been a request for a, a public taking, in other words, for, for the widening of the road, it will change the variances that are being presented. So essentially, the current presentation really, it's going to be difficult for us to actually hear it on its merits because it will need to be changed. But I just wanted to clarify that. I should have done that earlier, sorry. Go ahead.
The next person is.
Oh, sorry. Didn't really chime in on the deferral.
I, I, I'll unmute Olga again so she can restate her position.
Sure, having heard that, I support that my neighbors and obviously a lot of people in the neighborhood are very unhappy with the current proposal. Given what you said, I think a deferral is just kind of the reasonable plan to go.
Thank you.
The next person on the list, Helia Ralph.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I never received any notification that this outrageous development was happening on number two Blaketon. I live at number twenty-two Blaketon, so I don't know why I never even got notified. Having said that, I am absolutely opposed to this development for safety, congestion, parking, property.
Okay, we're not going to get into all of that. We just want to know whether you're okay with the applicant's request to defer this to come back to you with a different proposal.
No, I oppose the deferral.
Okay, thank you. And if you want to get on, if you have, were missed on the list, can you? They're on, no, no, but she said she didn't get notice. She, because she's on the list now. Okay, so you will get notice if we defer this to another date. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
We have one more?
Yes, Mister Chairman, Hitcham Alhalabi.
Thank, thank you. I also oppose the deferral because.
Thank, thank you. Uh, I also oppose the, the deferral, uh, because my understanding, the developer is not planning to come up with a significant change on the, uh, addressing the variance due to the road widening. I don't think that's enough, uh, so unless there is a massive change he plans to do, which is not the case, so...
Well, we don't know, we don't know that, that's... Okay.
Well, they only reference the, the road widening at this point, um...
Okay. So you're opposed to the deferral, thank you. Is there anyone else? We've covered everyone now?
I believe we have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do you want to come back up?
Uh, we would still like to ask for a deferral and that we are given a chance to do revision and also to obtain the new zoning notice. Uh, we absolutely understand, uh, uh, reaction from the neighborhood, but, uh, the zoning notice that was previously issued and we had communication with the city planners is not reflecting, in fact, the current, uh, reality and situation. Two Blaketon Road is, uh, from 2024 is in, in the map for a major zoning, uh, major street zoning regulation. So although previously it was in a zone, uh, neighborhood zoning, and, uh, uh, the confusion is also now that we have two bylaws where B-608, uh, from 2024 is superseding certain...
Yeah, I, 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 I get that. I don't want to get into all of that. And I also, I understand you've reduced the number of variances from 14 to nine. Uh, that's, nine is still a lot of variances and you still have a lot of opposition.
Yes.
So if you do get this deferral, I would suggest you take the opportunity to do something that's a little bit more palatable to the community.
Yes, and, uh, I would say, in fact, that unfortunately, we didn't have any comments until September the 16th, when we received, uh, a report from Transportation. And, uh, in communication with city planners, they told us also that they will, they will, for the next time, they will produce their report and memorandum.
We, we understand all of that, um, but you also can now appreciate how the community feels.
Yes.
And if we do get you the deferral, they're going to come back. And you need to take, you need to take that into consideration.
Yes, certainly. And, uh, and, uh, we were trying also to comply with the both zoning. By also, for the next time, we will have, I believe, more, uh, refined zoning notice, which will more reflect, uh, where we will...
Yeah, I mean, I don't like to see, um, an application page which is half-read, meaning half of the, uh, half of the variances are changed anyway, so... We might have deferred you anyway. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've had the discussion. I think that's probably the longest discussion we've ever had on a deferral item. So let's take it into committee for some discussion. Obviously, the community is upset about this and, um...
Yes, so with that, um, it's a tough crowd here today, and that's good to see. But I think in fairness to everyone, I'd like to move a motion to defer because, and then in doing that, I'm going to ask the applicant to work with the community and come back with something better that you can at least get some support for because you don't have an ounce of it right now. And with that, uh, also make sure you address all the comments you have received from Transportation and Planning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dalton. Is there a second or for that motion?
I'll second that.
Thank Ms. Pupavik, all in favor? Okay, the item is deferred.
Just a suggestion for the agent, you've got quite a bit of opposition here. You may want to meet outside just to get their contact information so that you can sit down and hear what they have to say so that perhaps you can incorporate some of the revisions or their concerns in your revisions because otherwise you're just, there will be more people next time.
Thank you. Unfortunately, this process takes time, but that's why the process does generally work, so thank you for your time. So we'll go back to the top of the agenda, to item one, which is 24 Ashwood Crescent. This is an application to construct an access, an access, accessory structure pergola in the south side lot. Uh, there's one variance and... Yeah, okay, let's, let's wait a minute till the room clears.
If you run out of cards...
I apologize, Mr. Chair.
No, that's okay. I think we needed a little bit of break there. So Nico David is the, uh, agent?
Yes, um, Mr. Chairman, they were online, um, or they are online, sorry. I tried to sound check them earlier, but I wasn't able to get a response.
Okay, let's see if we can find him now.
Uh, hi, good morning.
Good morning.
Yep, my name is Nico David from 903 Camembert Drive, and I'm an agent for, in the poor Ashwood Crescent.
Okay, thank you. I don't think we need a full presentation. Um, I do have a couple of questions, and if you're open to us just asking questions, um, let me know. Are you okay to forego your presentation?
Uh, yes, yep.
Okay, super. So I, I just have a couple of questions. There's a, there's a slight discrepancy between the site plan and the photos regarding the existing deck. If you could address that for me? Oh, I think I know what it is. It's okay. Um, the staircase that's shown on the, um, drawings, I'm assuming it is missing on your, on your, in the photos. It hasn't been built yet or something?
Sorry, but...
If, if we, if we could get staff to pull up the site plan? So on the bottom left-hand corner, there's a staircase indicated. On the photos, um, it's not there.
Um, sorry, I'm gonna confirm that with the, with our engineering team and... I do believe, um, it's gonna be... It's gonna be added.
Hasn't been built. Okay, that's fine.
Yep, yep.
Super. And do you know what your lot coverage is without the pergola?
Let me check. So for the existing one, it's currently at 32.92%.
Okay, so you're under the 33 right now, so it's just the pergola that's going to put you over.
That's right, yep.
Okay, super, thank you. I just wanted to clarify those two points. Um, any questions, panel members?
Yeah. So the drawings are noting the pergola at 33.82 square meters, but you're looking for a total of 73.15 square meters. What is the residual of 39.33 square meters for?
Sir, can you repeat the question? I apologize. Yep, uh, sorry, um, can, uh, can you please re- repeat the question? I apologize.
Sure. So your variance is to increase maximum lot coverage of 33% or 271.57 square meters to 41.9344.72 square meters. I get that. So I'm looking at your, at your drawings, you're seeing proposed pergola, 33.82 square meters. But you're looking for a difference of 73.15 square meters, so there's a residual of 39.33 square meters. What is that for?
Uh, sorry, I guess it's for the existing, uh, shed?
Sorry, for the what?
Existing shed.
Oh. Shed, yeah, frame shed.
Where's the shed?
Where's the shed?
On the upper, uh, right corner of the set plan.
Shed, okay.
Yep.
So that shed is... 425 square feet?
No, can't be.
It can't be because the proposed pergola is 33.82, and that's 364 square feet, and the shed is smaller than the pergola.
Yep, I'm, sorry, I'm checking the math here. I guess, um... There have been some, this, um, typographic error with regards to the uh, total lot coverage, so it's supposed to be, based on the statistics table, it's supposed to be, um, 37.03%, including the pergola. But, um, because... Uh, the 41.9% uh, came from the zoning, uh, zoning review, so uh, we didn't have any clear indication on what they're referring to for that one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
2, 7, 1. Okay, yeah. So, so you're saying the pergola is more than 33.8?
So the pergola alone is, uh, 4.11%.
The, sorry, the pergola alone is what?
Uh, covers, um, 4.11% for the lot coverage. And then for the existing dwelling, it's, uh, 32.92%.
Okay, what is the square meters of each?
Uh, so for the pergola, it's 33.82 square meters.
Okay.
And then for the existing dwelling, it's, uh, 270.94 square meters.
Okay, but that doesn't add up.
Uh-huh, yep. For the, we just answered the, uh, what the ZAP gave us, based on their zoning review, so, yep.
I know, but when you get the ZAP and before you apply to Committee of Adjustment, it's incumbent on you to read that because that, if you submit it to us, it means you agree with that information. So now the committee members have questions for you because your notice says that you will have a coverage of everything of 41.9%. That doesn't match your site statistics. So they want to know where that extra coverage is coming from. Do you have an answer to that question? Or is your site statistic information incorrect?
Yeah, are you sure that your coverage for the house is what you've stated?
Yep, absolutely.
It is 270. Then you don't need a 41.9 coverage.
Yep, uh, that's right.
But we don't know what you actually need. Do you want to defer this and clarif, and straighten out the numbers?
Um, currently, I think we're just questioning, uh, the pergola's lot coverage, so...
I mean, the option is we can approve this with the square footages that you've indicated, but then the percentages will change, and you'll need to tell us what those percentages will be. But our concern is that that may or may not be correct. And if it's incorrect, you're going to have to come back for another hearing. So do you want to take a deferral to straighten out your statistics?
I'm sorry, if we defer this, um, we're gonna have to, is, are we gonna have to reschedule for the, another, um, when the...
You have to reschedule, but you will not have to repay. Yeah, you won't have to pay any additional fees. You'll just have to provide the correct statistics for the next hearing. If you want to go forward, then I would suggest we def, we hold this item until you tell us what percentage you actually need. But then you're taking the risk of being wrong and then having to come back. Your choice, but I'm gonna need an answer.
Uh-huh. Um, is it all right, um, uh, I discussed this first with our engineering team?
Okay, so we're gonna hold your item to the end of the agenda.
All right, that's all right. Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chair, can we go to the, the refund request person is online so that they don't have to wait the whole hearing?
Sure.
For five door knock drive?
Okay, so we have a request for a refund. It's a request for a partial... For a partial refund.
Excuse me, Rosemary Storino or Rosemary Chappetta, can you please not have noise while the chairman is speaking?
So they're asking...
All the, all the Jasons who are...
Okay, go ahead. Why don't you just tell us what you want? Rosemary? So just cut them off. We'll leave them to the end of the agenda. I'm not going to deal with it now. Item two. 7624th Street, this is an application to construct a new four-unit dwelling. There are five variances being requested. Forestry is requesting condition one in the event of approval. Uh, we have seven letters of objection. We have advisory comments from MetroLinks. The applicant is Shane Edwards.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, fellow committee members.
Good morning, sir. Um, we're gonna need a, a full presentation on this item, please.
Thank you, through you, through you, Mr. Chair. So my name is Shane Edwards from Hughes Design Studio located at 1A Conestoga Drive, Brampton, Ontario. We're the agents representing the owners for 7624th Street. Application number A030225EYK. I'll be, be speaking to the application this morning. Um, uh, Mr. Chair, after some careful last-minute deliberation with our client, we would like to request, uh, deferral for the file at this time.
Okay.
Um, after reviewing some of the reports from staff and the number of neighbor opposition letters in detail, uh, we'd like to take some time to review the design with planning staff and make revisions to where we can arrive at a design concept that's deemed supportable and is sympathetic to the neighbor concerns. Uh, we would request, uh, just a, a deferral until the next available hearing, if possible. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. I believe that's a wise, uh, decision. No, we didn't. Anyway, um, we have a number of speakers waiting on this item. Um, if we can just get a quick chime in with regards to their opinion on the deferral. Hopefully, this one won't go as long as the last one. Andy Choles, are you okay with the deferral?
Think that's a wise decision as well. Concerned about the length and depth.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next person online, or is someone in, someone in person for this?
Uh, no, sir. Gareth Tomlinson was gonna be in person, but they're actually online and I just unmuted them.
Yeah, hi, committee. Uh, I'm here. Uh, I agree with the, uh, deferral.
Thank you.
We just need your name and address for everyone who's...
Oh, sorry. Gareth Tomlinson, two Laburnum Avenue.
Thank you. Diana Louie?
Diana Louie, uh, was registered, but they never appeared. Uh, so we have an Amanda Creo.
Hi there.
Good morning.
Amanda Creo, nineteen Laburnum Avenue.
And your opinion on the deferral?
Um, I am against the deferral.
You would like them to go forward with the app, with the hearing today?
Yeah, because I'm not in agreeance with the plans that are presented.
Well, they're suggesting they're gonna come back with different plans, but that's fine. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there anyone else, Paul?
There isn't, Mr. Chair, sorry.
Okay, thank you. So let's take it back to committee. Um, applicant is asking for a deferral. Most of the, uh, other speakers are in agreement with that.
Uh, I, uh, agree with that, and I would move a motion for deferral to give the applicant time to, uh, rejig and re-twig and come back.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, all in favor? Okay, that item is deferred. We might actually get to hear one one of these days. Okay, we're trying to get there. Item three, um, one twenty-nine Queens Drive. This is an application to construct a two-story rear and west-side addition to the existing semi-detached dwelling. There are three variances being requested, and there are no comments from any city departments. Orzen Stamback is the agent. I'm assuming online, because I don't see anyone here.
They're online and they're unmuted, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ozzern Stamback at fifteen Moreland Road.
Okay, I don't think we need an applica, um, a presentation. I think it's pretty straightforward. If you're open to us just asking questions?
Yes, sir. May I, Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. Um, okay, let's take it into committee for a vote.
So with that, uh, I would like to move a motion for approval, as the application is very straightforward, meets the four tests, and there are no conditions.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Laura. Same, same to as last time, okay.
We're the fastest.
Bill and Laura, okay, perfect. Thank you. Our first approved application of the day. Oh, sorry, all in favor? Yeah, it just, okay. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Stamback. Number four, seven Kirk Braden Road East. Uh, this is an application to construct a new detached dwelling with an attached garage. There are two variances being requested. And again, no comments from any city departments. We have... Joshua Hink?
Yes.
Mister, Mister Chairman, no other area residents are on, uh, are present, other virtually are in person, so it's just, uh, the agent.
Okay, so the people that are listed never...
Never showed up.
Never showed up, okay. So Joshua?
Yes.
Great. Um, can we just get a brief overview? I don't think we need a full presentation on this item.
Uh, sure. First, I wanted to apologize that, um, my site statistics are incorrect for the lot coverage relief ask. It's showing as thirty-seven point two, however, it should be forty-three point three per the zoning notice, so I do know what it's supposed to be, but unfortunately, the document submitted had a typo.
Okay, sorry, I just pulled up the document now, so what is it and what is it supposed to be?
Uh, our document is showing thirty-seven point two. It should be forty-three point three for lot coverage.
For lot coverage. I'm looking at... The, the notice is correct.
The notice is correct.
The notice is correct. It's, it's my site statistics.
Okay, I'm, cause I'm looking at the numbers and saying, where's...
Notice is good, notice is good.
Okay, so we, we can correct the drawings, we can't change the notice, so that's fine.
Yes, okay, great. I was hoping we wouldn't need to defer for that typo.
I, I, I thought we were looking for another deferral.
No.
Bit of, bit of a theme today, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So, for this, we're asking for relief in two different variances. The first one is, um, F S, F S I. We're requesting a twenty-two per, uh, twenty-two percent increase to the permitted floor space index. Uh, current allowable is fifty percent, so our proposal is asking for seventy-two percent. Um, we believe that this ask, uh, is within the established pattern of development in the area where larger family homes with higher GFA are increasingly common and also contribute to the desirability of the community for, to allow for larger families. The lot coverage increase, uh, basically same argument. Uh, the only thing I would like to note is that five point seven percent of that increase, of that ten percent increase is for a rear deck that is partially covered by a canopy. If there is some comments that the request for the increased, uh, lot coverage is too much, um, we are prepared to shrink the deck so that it is five percent of the coverage, which would basically take it off of the, um, being counted for GFA. So the, there would still be a variance, but the variance ask would be reduced to five point seven, or no, sorry, four point three versus ten percent, if that makes sense.
Okay, but your preference is to leave it as it is, correct?
Correct. We just wanted to add that note.
As an, as an option, okay. So let's, let's just check if there's any opposition here first. Um, cause we didn't have anything submitted to us in writing. Um, so is there anyone here to speak to this item or anyone else online to this item? No. Okay. So you, are you going to ask for a reduction or are you gonna go for it as submitted?
We'll go for it as submitted.
Okay, thank you.
Unless committee has comments.
Well, that's our next step. Okay, any questions or comments?
Sir, you have to decide. You're not bargaining with the committee.
No, our decision is to go as is.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, that was something the client really wanted me to bring forward.
Okay.
And on that, I'd say good call. Um, I find the application straightforward. If there's no other discussion, no, I'm gonna move a motion then. Um, no, I think it's good application, it's very straightforward, meets the four tests, and there are no conditions.
Okay, is there a second, Rick? Okay, Rick, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous approval. Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you for your time.
Mr. Chair, could we have a five-minute break?
I was just gonna ask if you wanted a break. Okay, so we'll take a break.
There's no actual solution. This is bringing too many people in. Seems to me, if we ask the question, have you consulted with the neighbors, and the answer is no, then the impacts would not be different. I just feel bad for you, all these people.
Yeah.
And it's gonna happen again. They, they just don't care.
Well, that deferral was posted on...
Mr. Chair, your mic?
Okay, guys, it's past... We're well past ten forty now.
My kids don't even say that about me.
Can we start? Can we proceed, or do we have to wait for the online moderator?
Well, we don't have a host, and he didn't give me the ability to do it, so...
Okay. Thomas, welcome back. Sorry? No, I don't know.
Thomas, if you're doing two jobs, we'll pay you that one.
No, I do not. Okay, so we're at item five. This is fifty-two Beachwood Avenue. This is an application to construct a new detached garage in the rear yard. There are three variances being requested. We have on file six letters of support. Um, we have an agent online and a area resident online. Lena Rodriguez is the agent.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. My name is Lena Rodriguez. My address is eleven fifteen, that's four five more on the left.
Good morning. Um, there is someone else online. Can I just ask, um, is, is Foster Colburn still there? Okay, can, can I just ask if they're here in opposition or in support, or...
Uh, can you hear me, um, Mr. Chair?
We certainly can, loud and clear.
I, I, um, I am in, um, opposition to part of the application.
Okay, that's all, that's all I wanna know for now, because then if that's the case, I'm gonna ask Lena to do a full presentation. If you were not, then I would just get her to do a partial, so...
Thank you.
Stand by, thank you. So Lena, if you can go forward with your, uh, presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the proposal before you is to construct a new one-guard garage to replace the old system. The existing garage is about fifty years old now, and actually, it's just sitting on an asphalt floors. So all these years, it's already, uh, the roof structure is already leaning onto one side. When the owner wanted to repair it, he decided that he just have to rebuild it, seeing that it's, uh, it's not, uh, structurally, uh, built really, uh, as, as it is originally. So the new interior width of the garage, uh, will be widened by a foot, like point thirty meters, by a foot. So it's gonna be wider than the existing one now, and this exists, uh, this, uh, added, uh, space will, uh, be, uh, an ease to the owners who are both retired, uh, seniors, and just an added, uh, ease, uh, ease for their mobility, swinging of the door would be easier and getting in and out of the, uh, vehicle. So we have three variances we're requesting for approval. One is the lot coverage. So the additional four percent lot coverage increase is, is due to the added width of the garage, which is a total of one point eighty-eight square meter. So the new garage now will have an area of twenty-nine square meter. And the other, uh, the second, uh, variance we're requesting is the side yard setback. This is an existing side yard setback, so we're actually, uh, building it in the exact location. The, the rebuild of the garage will be in the exact location as it is, and as, and it's also... The, the rebuild of the garage will be in the exact location as it is and as, and it's also is, and, um, the typical layout or the established pattern of all, uh, corner lot properties with garages that have abiding, uh, entrance, entrances and the abiding side, um, splits. And the third, the third variance we're requesting is the eaves. The eave will approach in the building setback. But all the eaves will still be inside the property, so there's nothing, no protection beyond that, the property lines. We believe this are minor and we believe this are desirable also and appropriate for the development of the land and the building. And we are kind of interested, um, in it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Um, just, so the new garage is not going to be any larger than the existing garage?
It has, it will be a little wider.
Okay, and so the setback from currently. I guess the current, um, west setback. Well, how, how is that compared to the proposed west setback?
Current setback of the, the side yard setback. Oh, the side yard setback, again, because it's a, a corner lot, is, is, is existing the same, but the bylaw requires six meters, but it, it can't be, it's only point ninety-five existing and it will be point ninety-five also.
Okay, so it's gonna be the same, that's, that's all I.
It's gonna be the same, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, any other questions?
No.
No, okay, so if we can ask the other, uh, deputy to come forward.
Um, thank you for the opportunity to, uh, speak, uh, regarding this, um, application, um, Mr. Chair. Uh, first of all, I must say, I, um, fifty-two Beechwood has, uh, the, the, the property is very well kept. In fact, it's one of the best kept properties within the, 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 the community. And, um, I often admire walking past a property to see how well kept it is. My objection is not towards.
Sir, can you just state your full name and address?
Oh, sorry, my apologies. My name is Foster Friday Colburn. And I live at fifty-nine Cryessa Avenue, which is just around the corner from where this property is. Um.
Sorry, what was your address?
My address is five nine Cryessa Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
May, may I continue?
Yes, please.
Okay, so as a community member, I often, I have to pass that property on my way to, um, take the bus at, uh, Rock Cliff. Um, Alliance Avenue's, um, around that area. And what they're asking for, which I, I mean, some pictures, the commit, the committee saw pictures of other, um, garages in the neighborhood, which is correct. There are garages in the neighborhood, but they're not adjacent to the sidewalk. What this per, what this applicant is asking for is to widen a garage, which I have no objection to. My objection to, to the application is the north, they would like to encroach to the, the north side of the property, which would mean it would be adjacent to, to the, the sidewalk, that as a, as a community member, I have to pass. And if they reverse from their garage, I could be hit as a, as a pedestrian because they're asking that the garage would be moved probably around, um, three, um, maybe around twelve inches, according to what their application is, from the sidewalk. So that whole property, um, the garage would, in, 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 instead of accommodating two cars, it would now be able to accommodate four cars and it would encroach to the sidewalk. And there must be a reason why, so it's a safety issue for me. And there must be a reason why the city of Toronto only permitted, um, property owners a certain amount of leverage in construction of the, their, um, buildings. Um, what, what, what the, um, presenter, which I find was very, um, it was, she, she was generous in showing the pictures of other garages, but she was disingenuous in not describing to the committee the true intent of the co, of the construction. The construction would move north to the sidewalk, which would, so as a pedestrian, when you're walking, you would be inches away from the structure. So a person could come out to the garage, reverse out and hit you and, and you may not be aware. So, um, that is my objection. I don't, I do not object to the widening of the garage, but what I object to is the lengthening towards the sidewalk.
Okay, I, I think I wanna get some clarification here because I, I, I'm not seeing that. I'm not seeing a variance for that and can we?
There is.
Can we pull up the site plan?
It says the new detached garage will, will locate zero point nine meters on the north side lot line.
Okay.
So from six meters, they're asking for a variance to zero point nine.
Right, cuz the north, the north side lot in this case is the street.
Exactly. So where they are, there is a six meter from the, from the sidewalk. So you see the, the, um, where's the, there's a sidewalk there. So they're asking that the, the extension of the garage would, would be, it would be, um, covering the asphalt that they have there now. So if I'm walking.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure if that's actually the case. Um.
Sir, if we can pull up the photo, the first set of photos that shows the existing garage next to the garage next door.
Yes.
It will maintain that setback because the lot line is not next to the.
To the sidewalk. There's City Boulevard in between.
It's still. Boulevard.
If you, if you pull up, alright, there's a picture, that's the existing picture now.
Yes.
They want to go, um, east-west, east-west, whi, which is neighbor to forty-nine Cryessa. I have no problem with that. My problem is, is that they want to extend the garage north, which is where the, where that car is currently. They have a white Volkswagen.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not sure that's the case. If we pull up the.
No, they're widening the garage.
If we pull up the site plan, you will see that the new proposed garage lines up with the existing garage next door. So the front face will be no further forward than it is now.
It's just wider.
It's just wider.
Can you show us? So, so if, if, so I mis, I misunderstood then, when it says in section, in section two, it says the minimum yep, side yard setback for an auxiliary building or structure containing a parking space where it is on the corner lot and vehicle access is from the street, a button the side lot line is six meters. That is what it's currently, six meters.
No, that's not what it is currently, that's what the requirement is. They currently do not meet that requirement and it would be impossible to build a garage facing the street meeting that requirement.
So if we could pull up the survey.
Sir, the new detached garage will lo, will located zero nine five meters from the north side lot line.
Which is.
Yes, from the lot line, not from the sidewalk.
So if you look at the screen now and we can zoom in on the existing garage, the existing garage is already setback zero point nine five from that north lot line. They're just making the garage wider. Not closer to the north lot line or the sidewalk. It's just going to be closer to their rear lot line where the garage on Cryessa is. So wherever in that picture that we showed previously, that same distance will be there. But it, it's misleading because it's city property, but when you're walking past on the sidewalk, you don't know that it's city property.
Uh, that was my concern a, as a community member, that the garage will be extended north.
It's not going to be extended, it's going to be in the same position as the current garage.
Okay, well, if it's in the same position, I have no objection. My objection is if it, if it is built further.
I mean, that, that's why we have the site plan as part of the application. If we pull up the site plan, you will see that the proposed garage, the front face of it lines up with the front face of the neighbor's garage.
Yes, currently.
No, as proposed. The survey shows the current situation, the site plan shows the proposed situation. So that's what's being proposed. And you can see the neighbor's garage to the right.
Yes.
And the proposed garage, the front face of it, the north face, is virtually in line with that existing garage to the right.
Okay, yes, and, and the variance they're asking for.
The variance is to comply with the bylaw. They currently do not comply with the bylaw. So it's essentially to maintain the existing setback.
Okay, and so you're telling me, um, Mr. Chair, that they will not be coming further to the sidewalk?
Correct.
And if they do come closer to the sidewalk, what is the remedy?
You, you would, you would file, you would let the buildings department know that they are not in compliance with their building permit. And what we can do is we can tie the, our approval to this site plan, so then they must comply.
Okay, I have no objection, and that was my concern as a pedestrian walking by, that the, the garage would be extended to the sidewalk.
So the variance that they're being granted does not give them permission to come any further to the sidewalk than they are right now.
Okay, I thank you very much for your time and that was my only concern I had.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I'm gonna come back to the applicant, but I don't think you need to do a rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, is there any, are there any other speakers? I'm assuming not.
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Okay, so I, I, I don't, I don't think you need the rebuttal, I think we did it for you. So to the committee for, um, discussion and/or motion. And I'm not sure if we actually even need to tie it to the, uh, site plan because the variance limits how close they can come anyway.
Yeah, no, and I agree with that, so I'd like to move a motion for approval. I believe the application is very straightforward, it meets the four tests and there are no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Laura. All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous approval. Thank you to the applicant and the area resident. Okay, item six. Item six has been deferred, so we're on to item seven. Four Sixth Street, this is a application to construct a second and third story addition above the existing detached dwelling. There are six variances being requested, which, one of which has been, uh, reduced. Um, we have two letters of concern, we have transportation requesting two conditions in the event of approval. And. We have, um, a nu, a number of speakers, so Alex is the owner and the applicant.
Hello, Mr. Chair and Committee, yeah, Alex Merriar here with four, six, three, I'm the owner.
Good morning. Um. I just wanna do a check-in again and just check, Linda Morris is also online.
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, Linda.
Let me just unmute Linda Morris one second.
Good morning.
Good morning, do you have concerns with this application that you're gonna voice with us today?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna put, I'm gonna get you to stand by and I'm gonna get Alex to do his presentation and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Committee. Um, just, I just first wanted to acknowledge the concerns of Linda at, uh, six Sixth Street, as well as the neighbor to the north of her, eight, six, three. I had the opportunity to meet Linda and go through, well, my future neighbor, and go through the application with her. As I understand, her concern is related to the eaves trough. Um, as per her letter, she acknowledges that the existing, um, eaves troughs are only four inches apart and that the, uh, proposed application would actually reduce the distance between them, although still infringement of the bylaw. Um, I guess her concern now is that rather than that eaves being at the first floor, uh, in line with grade with her current eaves troughs of the bungalow, it would be at the third floor. So we discussed just the importance of maintaining that and it be properly drained, uh, uh, through a downspout. So I think I just wanna acknowledge that concern, but that ultimately, and I hope when Linda speaks, she'll also acknowledge her, um, support that the application is considerate in terms of it not ex, um, extending the existing footprint with the exception of a small mudroom at the back. But I also wanna acknowledge the concerns of eight, sixth street. I think some of the concerns, uh, stem from the committee, uh, the community being soured by the application at fourteen Sixth Street in which the developer didn't really consider the neighbor's, uh, requests and they ultimately flipped the house and sold it for a profit whereas in my case, will be, um, a family home for hopefully a long time to come as well as a home office. So that's part of the need for, um, the extension and making it beyond what the bylaw requires in terms of the lot area. Um, on that, in, in the trend, and then finally the, the transportation request, or I, I guess I'll first address the, the platform. I spoke with city planning, um, they suggested that fifteen meters is in line with the variances that they've approved recently in the area. So I've, uh, agreed to reduce that to less than fifteen meters to comply with the city staff's suggestion. On the transportation element, um, pending approval from the committee, I'd be willing to maintain that tapered edge, uh, that, um, has been requested to maintain vehicular access without encroaching on the neighbor's property. Is a bit of a surprise to me intuitively because a car can't fit in there now because of, um, maybe the survey might suggest that a small vehicle would be able to get back there, but there are, um, exhausts and coming out of the house and different things on both sides and neither four, sixth nor two, sixth has their vehicle get back there currently. That said, I'd be willing to comply and, and in the building application, submit a revision to that back extension and where, how the deck is aligned to be in line with that tapered edge to maintain that condition. So if, if agreeing to comply with that through the building application means I don't have to return to the committee of adjustment, I'd be more than happy to comply with that request.
Okay, thank you. Um, I have one question, I mean, you're applying, um, based on waiver, uh, not on zoning review. And I just wanted to confirm that you're comfortable with, that the minimum required side yard setback is in fact zero point four?
Yeah, that's right.
So you're, you're confident that that area, that is the, uh, minimum required? And you don't need a variance for that?
Um, is that for the north or that's overall, is there a point four?
Well, that's overall, but you have on one side, I guess it's the north side, um.
North side, yeah, um.
I know it's an existing su, uh, condition, but nonetheless, um, you would need a variance for that if it were not compliant.
Oh, I see, yeah. Um. Point four. What would be the implication of, I guess if I built that without getting approval for the variance, that would be the problem?
It could would be a problem. You could get a, uh, stop work order. You'd have to come back here. A double the fee.
And the neighbor might do that.
Okay. That's a good question. I'm not sure what the current setback is.
I mean, you're you're going for, the reason I'm asking is because it's not based on a zoning examiner. It's based on your waiver.
Right, right.
I I don't know, like, in in and the and the side yard setbacks aren't consistent throughout the city, so I don't know what it is specifically for this area.
I guess it it wasn't brought up because the in the exo- the zoning examiner's review, it wasn't flagged. So it was never as a.
So you have done a zoning review?
Yes, that's right. I've done a zoning review.
But you chose not to submit that with your application?
Says waiver.
Says waiver.
It says you're applying under waiver, which means you're taking the responsibility for being in compliance.
Well, in that case, yes, since we do have the zoning, uh, review, and it wasn't brought up, then I am comfortable.
Just wanted to make sure. Thanks.
I have a question as well.
Sure.
So, um, of the applicant, you mentioned, um, number fourteen on the street as being a little contentious with the neighbors. Uh, do you happen to know the height of that in comparison with what you're proposing?
Yeah, I think it's, uh, a little bit higher because they raised their first floor. I don't know the exact height, but I think the bylaw, it exceeds with the bylaw. They got a variance for that.
So you're just estimating it's a little higher, you don't know. Yeah, any higher than yours. Okay, thank you.
I'm not sure that the contention was around the height, but rather the.
The boxiness of it?
The boxiness and the encroachment on the front, and just the process that the developer went through, or the lack of process with regards to engagement of the neighbors or acknowledging that, and maybe Linda Morris can uh, second that as she was a resident when that happened, but I think it was more to do with the frontage and rather than the height, and maybe the aesthetic appeal is an issue.
Right. No, you have an interesting design, especially for the third, the third floor. I find it quite interesting, but, um, yeah, I was just wondering if it was, uh, lower or higher than number fourteen, but thank you.
Okay, uh, if there's no other questions, let's move on to the next speaker.
Hello?
Good morning.
Um, so I'm very new at this, and, um, I have my daughter-in-law with me who knows how to read plans and things like that, so I could interpret everything.
Let's let's start with your name and address.
Linda Morris, six, Sixth Street.
Okay, thank you. And are you going to be doing the presentation to us, or is your daughter?
Uh, my daughter-in-law will.
Okay, so we'll need to get her.
We have a little person here, so you might hear some squeaks.
Okay, um, can can we get her name and address then?
Hi, my name is Brittany Emery, and, uh, so I'm speaking on behalf of six, Sixth Street, but I live in Burlington.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, great. Um, I don't.
No, there's no video.
Okay, hi, okay, so I'll try and keep this brief. Um, on the whole, Alex, it sounds like you've been really considerate, Linda, and we really are just on here to um, just really have things on file and some assurances that you will follow through with the things that you've said. And, um, uh, as you know, uh, Linda is most concerned with the proximity of the the north wall to her property, because there's twenty-six inches between the houses. And, um, as you have already stated, she would like an assurance that you will maintain your eaves and um, incorporate in your design the most appropriate downspout, um, uh, layout to reduce overflow onto her roof in the event of a major storm or any other blockage. Um, now, on the drawings, it looks like there are eaves on all three, um, all three floors on the elevations from the west and the east sides, but on the north elevation, it doesn't seem to have a an eve across the first floor, so just wanted to confirm that there is in fact one there as well.
Do they need one?
Yeah, well, no, just so it's obvious. Uh, don't mind our our nattering, just making sure we we all understand. And then, uh, so that is for the eaves. Um, another thing that is unrelated to variances, but we just wanted to put it, um, into the meeting now, so we have it on file, um, as Linda is quite nervous about the structure of her, uh, basement, uh, foundation, and we would like to have an insurance that underpinning will go through the right process with the Building Department and receive a permit for that, um, and make sure that, um, workers understand to maintain the integrity of the basement level without any jeopardy or weakening of, uh, Linda's house and her foundation. And Linda piped in, if there's anything. Um, and then next on our docket is the front yard setback. We understand that that is only for the second floor. And we would like an assurance that once that front yard setback is granted, that it won't be utilized on the first or third floor. And.
Second or third floor?
Yes, second, did I say that? Second, no, it's it's on the second floor.
Yes.
We wanna make sure it's not used on the first.
First floor, okay.
Or third floor, since the main floor is where it would be most affected, or Linda would be most affected with her sight lines to the waterfront. Uh, so that is front yard setback, roof eaves. Underpinning, we've covered those three. Those are the most important to us. The third story, um, platform, we understand it has been reduced, so we would just like to know how, what the layout is now. Um, the increase destiny, increase density, sorry. Uh, we understand there is a lot of precedent in the area, and it seems reasonable to be putting on a third floor, and they've been very considerate with um, additions in the rear and back, like it doesn't seem to really affect Linda's property too much. Uh, the height increased to ten point six five. It is a lot, but understandable, since it is a third story. Linda is nervous that she will lose a lot of light into her rooftop skylight.
But it's in keeping.
But it's in keeping with what's happening in the neighborhood. Um, and then for the additional walls, item four, um, we understand there will be a decreased setback versus of point four meters versus one point four meters. Um, but this doesn't seem to really impact, um, Linda's backyard too much. So that is really our summary. So we're really just here for assurances that Alex will follow through with the proposed plans. And, um.
And and we want to acknowledge, I would like to acknowledge that, um, we're we're really appreciate the way that the design was done, that it's not offensive, that it's actually a beautiful home, and that we support Alex being there and being a family there. And, um, you know, my my items, um, were really just, um, because I want to make sure that I understood everything and that we have some assurances. But, uh, overall, we're very positive about his, uh, application and wish him all the best.
Okay, thank you. Um, if I can ask one question, then I'm assuming that if Alex would not be opposed to us tying approval to a site plan, that that would give you the assurance that the ground floor will not protrude into the front yard setback? Would that be acceptable?
Be great, yes. That would be great.
That what?
Well, the assurance, because once you're granted that front yard setback, it could be applied to all three floors.
Oh, I see, I see, because we don't wanna lose our our site.
If the site plan is, uh, a condition of approval, then it can't apply to the ground floor.
Yes, right, yes, because then we would lose, because the houses have a view of the lake, so we don't want.
We understand the concern. Just, thank you.
But in the design, current design proposed, he's been super considerate, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And if that's a condition, then.
Okay.
Okay, and a quick question just about, sorry, um, to interrupt, but regarding the, uh, the waiver versus a zoning notice, is it just that a zoning notice was not included in this committee application?
I don't know.
It does exist?
I I Alex has to answer that.
Okay, so we would appreciate if that notice was included in this file, and I understand it would be included also.
That's really his choice and his peril if he chooses not to include it.
Okay, but it will be included in a building permit application?
No.
It won't.
It doesn't have to be if he's got, uh, the approval of the ver- it it but, yeah, but if he's got it wrong and he needs more variances, he'll be coming back.
Understood, okay.
Okay. Thanks. Any questions from panel members now? Okay, so I'm assuming there's no one else to speak on this? Okay, so let's come back to Alex.
Yeah, I think that, um, I do have the notice, and there's been no identification of the city the need for that, uh, side yard setback, so I'm comfortable taking that risk.
Okay.
And then I'm also comfortable with amend, uh, appending the site plan. I think that's a good solution to, um, just hold me to that, so I don't fill out the front porch or anything.
Yeah, and it doesn't tie you to what you can do on your other floors or the the design or anything, it's just the, uh, the site, the ground floor only.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Um, any questions from panel members? No? If not, let's take it into committee for discussion and or motion.
Sure, so with that, I'd like to move a motion for approval. I believe the application meets the four tests subject to the transportation conditions, and then we will also add a new condition tying it to the site plan, which is sheet A zero four, which looks like it has a date of August ninth, twenty twenty-four. Is that correct? Mister applicant? That's the only data on it, so that's what I'm using.
Barb, is that the date for the?
We'll just tie it to the revised site plan that we have on file, that was submitted September tenth.
Thank you.
Okay, secondaire for, uh, Bill's motion?
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Public. All in favor? Okay, that's the unanimous approval. Thank you to everyone.
And that's on the amended application.
Correct.
Yes, as amended with two con- with two conditions.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, item eight, fifty-six Lake Crescent. This is an application to construct a one-story rear addition, a rear yard deck and a concrete pad in the rear yard. The existing detached garage and the rear yard will be dem- in the rear yard will be demolished. There are three variances being requested. Uh, transportation is requesting three conditions in the event of approval. And we have no other comments. There are some photos in the added materials for committee members.
Mister Chairman, everybody on your list is present on the call.
Okay, um, so let's start with the applicant.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and Committee members. Um, my name is Khalid Ibrahim from IDIM Architects. I'm the architect and the agent of this application.
Good afternoon, um. Can we get a brief overview of your application?
Okay, all right, so we are proposing, uh, one-story rear addition and rear deck, and we are removing the existing garage. And we are asking for three variances, um, relief. Uh, the first one is the maximum permitted FSI is point four times the lot area, while the proposed FSI is point four-five. Uh, the minimum required side yard setback is point nine meters, while the proposed ECR east side yard is point eight-nine, and this is actually because of the position of the house. A minimum of one parking space is required, while the zero parking space is provided. Uh, so since we are removing the the garage at the back, uh, we remove the existing parking space, however, um, if you could please bring the the photos, uh, you can see on the side yard, uh, the existing driveway, we're gonna keep it, and we can park up to four cars. So, um, we, we think, um, or we believe our, um, application is meeting the four tests, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
My first question has to do with the transportation conditions, and are are you aware or do you understand, um, what they're asking you? Because they're asking for illegal parking space.
Correct, yeah, I read it, and, uh, could you please provide, bring the other photos, not the trees ones?
So I I think the question is, of those four cars that you can park, is one of them, i- i- could one of them be defined as a legal parking space?
Um, no, because of the, of the, um, the location is on the side yard, and also if we go further to the back, um, we have the the wall of the addition and the fence. So actually, we have two point seven five meters for the width, but the required width is three meters, because we have two sides, obstructed sides.
Okay, so you could not comply with that transportation condition then, with this proposal?
Yes, because we are short on almost point two eight meters, just to make it legal.
Okay, so we'll come back to how we deal with that. Um, any other questions? Okay, so there is someone else online wanting to speak to this application?
Hi there, my name is Deborah Lammers. I reside at fourteen Dartmouth Crescent.
Good morning, welcome.
Hi, this has been an entertaining morning to listen to. Um, so I am not actually new to this process. In twenty nineteen, I sat in front of the Committee of Adjustment for my proposed renovation at fourteen Dartmouth Crescent. In my original proposal, I was doing exactly what the applicant at fifty-six Lake Crescent was doing in removing my rear garage, and even though I could park multiple cars in my driveway, it would result in zero official parking being associated with the property. The property owner at fifty-six Lake Crescent, also within the sixty-meter radius to receive this notification, objected to my original plans, uh, for this very reason, and so I'm gonna use his words and not mine as it relates to parking. The parking on Dartmouth Crescent is a narrow street without on-property parking. The owners will be forced to use on-street parking. It is a narrow street reduced to one lane when cars are parked. If everyone on the street were allowed to do this, the street would be a serious bottleneck. And all other homes have off-street parking. So, not not my words, but his, so I find it a bit rich that five years later, he stands before this committee trying to do the exact same thing. And so I actually have read the transportation review and agree that the site plan should be revised to illustrate a minimum of one legal parking spot by way of the bylaw dimensions, and that he and and that he applies or revises his site plan accordingly.
Okay, so a bit of a, bit of a retribution here.
Not really. I think that the committee needs to be consistent in their decision-making, and we took it upon ourselves to take back the objections of our neighbors and did revise our site plan, so that we did have a legal parking spot. He can do the same thing in the back.
Okay, I was gonna ask you what the outcome was of your hearing, but.
Yes, so we revised our plan. We have an official parking spot on our property. Lake Crescent also just got, um, speed humps installed. It's a major through-street between Royal York and Lake Shore. Dartmouth is actually an offshoot of it, and it's actually wider. And so, um, the concern there is that while he can park four cars in that drive, none of them are legal. And as the transportation report states, he can have those tagged and towed at any time.
Not exactly. Uh, just because they're not legal, if they're beyond the house, they can't be tagged and towed, but that's okay. Any questions from? No, okay. They can't be tagged and towed if they're on private property.
But if they're on the, um, but if they're on.
If they're on the city boulevard portion.
If they're on the city boulevard, they absolutely can be, and if you look at where his, his, um, property line sits on the site plan, four cars are actually not possible.
No, but but three, but three would be, any, anyway, uh, we'll we'll leave it at that. Um, things have also changed in that the city no longer has a minimum parking requirement for new, uh, new units. So we're in a bit of a different, uh, political landscape. Um, I'll come back to.
I'm not sure I understand what that means.
That means if he was building this from new, he wouldn't be required to provide any parking.
When did that bylaw change?
Twenty twenty-two, yeah.
Two or three years ago.
That's interesting.
It is indeed.
Post-chair application.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're we've, we have applications now for four plexes with zero parking. Not necessarily what we wanna see, but that's what we get, so. And that's, and that is as of right. I'll come back to the applicant.
Yes, uh, I agree with you, Mr. Chair. This is what we. This is what we relied on. Is now, is not required, the new bylaw requiring parking spaces for any new build. However, because this is an existing, but we still, we can park easily three cars inside our property.
Just depends on the size of the car.
Yeah, because we have two point seven seven and two point seven five meters width. The only thing is, because of the bylaw asks for point three meter extra for the wall, if you have any obstructions on both sides, that you can easily park, yeah.
Okay, so I think what you should have actually, well, I'm not gonna say what you should have, but we have a bit of a dilemma because transportation is asking that you provide a legal parking spot. I'm assuming you don't want to or are not able to. Perhaps you can elaborate on what it would take to create that legal spot.
Yeah, and the only reason is the homeowner is sacrificing the garage because he wants to get more green space in the backyard.
Yeah.
So that is the only reason why he doesn't want the car to go all over the backyard. But if that a must, then we will show something on the site plan. That's the only reason.
Have you?
This is why we went through.
Have you thought of? Have you had any discussions with transportation? Because another option you could have gone with is rather than asking for zero parking spots is to ask for a spot that does not comply. And transportation would have taken a different approach to it perhaps. But anyway, I'll leave it at that. So how short are you on the width of the parking spot?
Point two eight meters.
Point two eight?
Yeah, less than a foot.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any questions?
So to be clear, you can't provide the width at all?
Unless I go all the way to the backyard. Because we have the wall of the addition and the fence.
But it can be provided, correct?
Sorry?
You can provide it though, right?
Yes, we can provide it.
Okay, the, what's not clear on the site plan is where you propose the asphalt driveway to terminate. Are you terminating it at the end of the deck or at the end of the addition?
Could you please just bring the site plan? Yeah, it's at the end of the deck.
So you've got over four meters there?
Yeah, but when we calculate the length, I need five point two for the length. So the legal space will be three meters by five point two meters.
I see.
So if I met the width, I will be less in the length.
On the length, okay.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. But realistically, you can park a car there? Yeah, okay, so. It just, if we're gonna try to do some kind of approval here, I just wanna know, how do we tie? How do we ensure that you're actually going to bring that driveway to that point? Because you're not showing what's, like, there's no term, like, you know, I think I know the answer to my question, it's okay.
I think we have the line, we showed the dotted lines.
The dotted lines are showing where you want to put new grass.
Yes, and then the line on the left side is the line of the end of the driveway, which is in line with the end of the deck. On the left side, yeah, of the new grass.
There's a solid line there?
Yes, this is the end of the driveway.
This is the end of the driveway? Okay, all right. Okay, I'm gonna take it back to committee then for some discussion. I think the dilemma is whether you want to impose a transportation condition or not.
Because they can't meet them.
Yeah.
So if they can't meet them, then we just move a motion with no conditions.
Let me just see if there's anything else in that transportation condition.
It's all related to.
Two point six meters in. Two point six meters in width, but.
An additional point three.
Okay, but the driveway, this is what doesn't make sense to me. The driveway is showing us two point seven seven.
But that's with an obstruction on one side.
I see.
As there's an obstruction, you need an extra point three.
Okay. Okay, so we're kind of splitting hairs here. I mean, we've had condos that will be asking for compliance for those kind of spots.
Completely. So with that, if no one else has any comment, I'm gonna move a motion for approval as I believe the application meets the four tests, but I'm not going to impose the transportation.
Okay, do you want to tie it to site plan to make sure that the driveway actually does go back to the end of the deck?
And then that's what. Yep, so then we'll impose the condition of tying it to the site plan drawing A point zero one.
Okay, thank you, Mister Dalton. Is there a second here? Thank you, Mister Ross, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous approval.
So that's tied to the site plan as it relates to the proposed driveway?
Yes.
Correct, thank you.
Okay, thank you to the applicant and the other deputant. Sorry, Rick was a second here, okay. Missing page five. Of course, okay. So item nine, sixteen Alden Avenue. This is an application to construct a one-story rear addition and a second-story addition above the existing dwelling. A previous Committee of Adjustment application approved variances related to lot coverage, height, exterior wall main height, front porch encroachment, rear deck location, and front canopy location. There are two variances being requested. And the speaker is online.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Shahid Danawati. I'm from one-three-zero-four Woodbine Avenue.
Okay, thank you, Shahad. Shahad, I have just one question, and that's, why are you back? How did we get here?
Yeah, the client found, the client's kids found the bedrooms, the children bedroom, to be small. So we just increased the size of the bedrooms, the children bedroom. And due to that, we had to come back because of a slight increase in FSI mainly.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, and there are no other speakers?
No, Mister Chair.
Okay, so let's take that into committee.
So with that, I find the application to be very straightforward. I move a motion for approval as I believe it meets the four tests and there are no conditions.
Thank you, Mister Dalton.
I'll second that, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Mister Povick, all in favor? Unanimous approval. Item ten has been deferred. We're on to item eleven, which is fifty-one Burnham Thorpe Crescent. This is an application to construct a new detached fourplex with a garden suite in the rear yard. There are two variances being requested.
Mister Chairman, sorry to interrupt. The agent is no longer online. They were earlier, but they're not anymore. Oh, sorry, they just came back in. One second, one second. Okay, you can continue, sorry about that.
No worries. Forestry.
Mister Chair?
Now, just before you start, let me just finish. Forestry was requesting denial or in the alternative conditions one and two. And let's come back to the agent. Good morning.
Good morning, Mister Chair. My name is Alima Nixadeh at two-three-six Lesmeen Road. I am architect and agent behalf of the owner for this application.
Thank you, sir. I don't think we need a full presentation. If there's some highlights you want to let us know, please do. Otherwise, if you're just open to questions, let us know if you're okay with that.
The only highlight I have for this application is regarding to the two variants that we are asking. One is related to the front parking spot at the front of the main building. We know that the parking is not required with this zoning for the fourplex, but for the convenience of the tenant, we propose enough parking inside. So we had to keep one of them at the front. Our original proposal was more parking at the front of the building, but we were able to manage to move them to the back and just leaving one parking at the front. So, and I think for the, as a regular, and as you see on the screen, the is a rendering of the proposed building. It looks like a very residential, it's not commercial or apartment building. We try to keep in a form of the neighborhood, even though at the back of the property, there is a five-story rental apartment existing. But we try to fit in the neighborhood. And as you, as we all know, every single family home, they have driveway, and then everyone is parking at the front of the house on the driveway. So I think it's very normal to have that parking at the front. Regarding to the second variance is just the footprint and the coverage of the proposed garden suite that are allowable is sixty. We are asking for the seventy-eight. And then that's the, again, for the requirement of the owner and the way that they are going to market for the rental. We, they are trying to have the, like, a high-level and a high-quality rental apartment in this property and the neighborhood. So we're just adding, asking for the little bit of more of coverage for the garden suite. The lot is very long. There is a. There is a future development is coming to the east of this property, and that is already approved, and the site was already demolished and is ready for excavation. So the whole area is changing the face to the multi-resident. So I think the proposed use of the, or this application is aligned with what's happening in the future of the community as well. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. I didn't think it'd be that long. Okay, thank you. I'm actually surprised and impressed by the fact that that additional parking spot does not trigger a front yard landscaping variance. So that gives me some comfort. Also, I believe this is a totally appropriate location for a fourplex. And unlike other applications, most applicants are coming here with providing virtually no parking, and you're providing quite a bit. And that's usually the big sticking point for the neighbors, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Any comments, questions? No? Anyone ready for a motion? Forestry has, is requesting conditions on this.
I'll bring that motion, Mister Chair. I believe that on balance, this proposal, this application meets the four tests. I note that Forestry has conditions, and that's it. I move to approve.
Thank you, Mister Povick.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Bill. All in favor? Okay, unanimous approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say hi to Mister Ross. Very happy to see you.
Flashback. Okay. Thank you for a good present, for a.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, item twelve. This is thirty Vice Regent Boulevard. It is an application to construct a new hotel. There are two variances being requested. We have no comments from any city department. And we have a support letter from the council. Sorry, the agent is online?
Good morning, Mister Chairman. My name is Mauricio Rogato, Registered Planner of the Platform Development Corp, representing the registered owner of the property regarding the minor variance application being considered this morning.
Good morning, sir. I'm not sure if you want to do a full presentation or not. I do have questions for you, however, if you choose not to.
I'm in your hands, Mister Chairman. You think a presentation would benefit questions? We're happy to answer your questions as well.
I'll tell you what, I'll ask you the questions first. In your summation, you're basically counting on the fact that you're going through site plan control, but you haven't provided us with any of the documentation from transportation or any parking study or anything like that. But you're asking for a parking variance. So I'm a little bit disappointed there. And my questions have to do with, you're addressing the parking demand from the two hotels, but I see no mention of the parking demand from the banquet hall. So I'd like you to address that.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. And firstly, my sincere apologies. We didn't intentionally not submit all the site plan control materials and city clearance.
I don't need all of that, but you're asking for a parking variance, and you're providing no evidence for us to make a decision on that parking variance.
Appreciate that, Mister Chairman. So in the absence of that, what I can advise, and, you know, obviously, it's difficult to, I can't electronically submit, but we're in the hearing now. The study did account for the banquet hall as well. That was the ninety-eight spaces, and perhaps my covering letter was inaccurate in that regard in arriving for the peak demand of two hundred and twelve total, accounting for the banquet hall, the existing hotel, and the proposed hotel.
So are the spaces for the banquet hall gonna be designated versus the, separated from the hotel parking? Or is it all gonna be one conglomerated parking?
One conglomerated parking, Mister Chairman. And the memorandum, and again, with forgiveness, because you don't have possession of it, of July twentieth to twenty twenty-three, Transportation Services approved the study and agreed with the peak demand. And we advanced the minor variance application before you only because the site plan control application has now reached substantial completion. So we thought it would have been a timely submission in terms of seeking the variances now that they've been confirmed, and all the agency comments have essentially supported the proposed design and parking reductions, Mister Chairman.
Okay, so let's add up the numbers. So you're saying your parking demand for the two hotels is one sixty-six?
So for the peak demand of a hundred and fourteen spaces for the existing hotel and banquet hall, and ninety-eight parking spaces for the proposed hotel, with the total of two hundred and twelve, Mister Chairman.
And how many rooms are in the proposed hotel?
So the proposed hotel is going to have, one second, Mister Chairman. Hundred and twenty-six hotel rooms.
So you're saying ninety-eight spaces are sufficient for a hundred and twenty-six rooms?
Based on peak demand, Mister Chairman. Based on peak demand, Mr. Chairman.
Really? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not a traffic engineer, of course. I could only speak to the study was reviewed, approved and.
And we don't have them and we don't have them in front of us. So that's the that's a little disconcerting to me. I mean, I I come from, I I used to be on the Parking Authority Board. So I this is something that I I find a little questionable. And you don't have the evidence in front of me. That's my other concern.
Yeah, what I can do, Mr. Chairman, if it helps, and again with forgiveness, I can share the memorandum from Transportation Staff, also the study as well. But I I am cognizant that we're in a hearing.
Okay, no, apparently not. The that would be outside of the rules that we just set out this morning. Okay. So so basically, your argument is ninety eight spots are sufficient for a hundred and twenty six rooms?
Correct, based on the peak demand together with, you know, I would imagine practically speaking, Mr. Chairman, because I that there would also make use of the other allocated parking.
What other allocated parking? The one that from the other hotel and.
Correct, yeah.
Because I'm I'm assuming that the forty room hotel is really an ancillary use to the banquet hall, is it not?
Correct, yeah. And there's two hundred and twelve parking spaces deemed as peak required with two hundred and eighty eight.
But this hotel is going to be a standalone hotel. So it's really different than an ancillary hotel use which you have now.
Correct, but again, because they're all on the same site. You know, again, just practically speaking, I imagine patrons would make use of the parking spaces.
Oh, I'm sure they will. I think my 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 my. My concern is you you've got a wedding going on with all kinds of guests at the banquet hall. And then you've got, you know, it happens to be a weekend, which is also the peak demand for hotel use. And you don't have enough spots to cover all the rooms that you've got in the proposed hotel.
Yeah, I appreciate the concern, Mr. Chairman. And and again, I I think we'll just keep coming back to you don't have the study, right? And the clearance from Transportation Services. But that was all accounted for in terms of uses with two hundred and eighty eight spaces exceeding the two hundred and twelve modeled peak demand that's anticipated, which provides a bit of a cushion. I get my math right, got two eighty eight total, deducting the peak demand, got a seventy six space surplus in theory, Mr. Chairman.
In theory, okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
But again, we don't have the benefits of 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 those studies. So I I'm leaving it at that. If there's any, I'm assuming there's no other speakers on this.
There are none.
Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to committee members for questions.
I I just have a comment. This is not exactly a very walkable neighborhood. I don't think you would see anybody walking to the hotel or walking to the banquet hall. So that's something to take into consideration.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? No?
Is there any public transit here?
There's buses.
There are buses, but having taken the bus to the Woodbine Race Track, I think it's around the Woodbine Race Track. There there will be a there will be a go station at the Woodbine Race Track eventually. I'm not sure when that's supposed to open, but there will be a but I've taken a bus there and it's a very, very long and arduous trip.
I'd just like to note that there could have been more evidence provided with this application. And I took it upon myself to look on the city website to see if there, in fact, there was the site plan application in and there was. I could see that some of the information that the applicant has referred to was there. But next time you put an application in like this, put it in with this application so we have it before us because otherwise we're walking blind.
Okay, um, is anyone ready for a motion?
I will. In spite of the lack of information, because I did look it up myself, I will move a motion for approval as I believe the application does meet the four tests and there are no conditions.
Is there a second or for Bill's motion?
I will second that motion.
Thanks, Rick. All in favor? Opposed? I just want to make a point that I can't vote on what I don't see. So, okay, the application is approved on a split decision. Thank you. Okay, item thirteen. Three forty five Dixon Road. This is an application to permit interior alterations to accommodate one additional dwelling unit and there is one variance being requested. And who do we got?
Peter Mohavlich, acting the fifty four hundred Young Street, acting on behalf of the Kipling Investments Limited, the owner, here to answer any questions if needed.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Where is the space coming from for the additional unit? Is it a laundry facility that's being converted?
That that's correct. We are basically reconfiguring a an existing storage area into the laundry room on the main floor. And then on the secondary floor, we're changing the existing laundry room into a one bedroom suite.
Okay, and are you decreasing the the number of laundry machines in this process?
No, we're not.
Okay, are you increasing?
I think we're we're maintaining.
Perfect, okay. It it would be helpful to have had a little bit of verbiage rather than us trying to figure it out through the drawings.
Yeah, not a problem.
Thanks.
Noted.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. We've got the same questions. Absolutely, okay. Anyone ready for a motion?
I will. I'd like to move a motion for approval. I do believe the application is very straightforward, meets the four tests and there are no conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson. All in favor? Okay, unanimous approval.
Mr. Chair, can we have another short break until noon?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, welcome back. Thank you for the brief recess. So we're at item fourteen now.
Mr. Chairman, just so you know, on this item.
Agent has changed?
The agent has changed. It's Rick Leong. And none of the other area residents who had registered are actually here.
Oh, okay. Are they online?
Sorry, is there anybody here? Just to double check for five ninety Horner Avenue.
No?
No. So none of the three other area residents are here.
Okay. Yeah, okay, I was surprised. I thought people were here for that. So five ninety Horner Avenue, this is an application to obtain consent to sever the property into two undersized residential lots. There are also the resulting variances that will come from the construction of new detached dwellings with the attached garages and secondary suites in basement. Three variances for each of the proposed new dwellings. We have transportation conditions of in the event of approval. We have the U C S advisory comments and conditions. We have an Arborist report on on file and Forestry is requesting refusal or in the alternative conditions one and two. And I'm sorry, is it Rick Leong that's an agent now?
Yes, my this is Rick Leong and I'm the agent for the owner.
And can I get your address as well?
Twenty seven ten fourteen Avenue, Macam.
Okay. Okay, so given that this is a severance, if you could please give us a presentation on your application?
Sure. Could I have the presentation material that I submitted on the screen piece? There was one.
Oh, sorry, I negated to say about all of the letters of opposition. There are, sorry, sixteen letters of of objection to this application.
Okay, yeah. This is a a servant. We are requesting to serve a lot into two and resulting in an undersized lot of twelve point two meter. According to the the actual bylaw allowed requirement would be thirteen point five. And also the lot area would be reduced it from from the required five ten, five hundred and ten square meter to forty four hundred and forty eight, roughly four hundred and fifty square meter. And the we don't have, we we have one variances regarding to the height of the building and we don't have any other issue with that. And from the from me, a surveying study around the area, we have we have number five fifty on the right, five fifty Horner, which had been had a servant back about a year ago, which had a frontage of seven point nine five. And also, we also have even five seventy five. They are, even though they are they are at a different song of R M, but just way across the street, they have a a lot of, they have been approved for a lot frontage of seven point six two. And we did a WAF study of the area. Most of the lot in the area is at the at a lot frontage at the at this on the street is roughly around twelve meters. So we we think that this proposal is minor within the nature of the the zoning and within the four tax. We have no issue with pending stuff and we have no problem with with transportations and also E S C. I believe the opposite, the the opposition letters that we received is mainly related to the trees on sites that we are proposing to remove. If we look into the an office report that we submitted on part one of the lot that which is the east, no west lot, west side, the tree tree that we are proposing to be removed is all in the poor conditions. And the other trees on part number two, though they are all with all of them are within the asal bright area of the building. So and also I believe we will have to, with your approval of this this proposal, we will, no matter what, we will have to go back to Urban Forestry and have them apply for a permit for this. So I believe that would be one of the things that we will we'll see later on. We have to work on. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the room to speak to item fourteen? No?
I, if I might, I believe the owner, they are on their way to to there, but I I'm not sure if they can make it.
Okay, they're here.
Are they here?
They're here, yeah, thanks.
Okay, even though the house is actually, the property is under a company.
Okay, I I thought you finished.
Okay, I'm good, I'm good then.
Okay, thank you.
I'll.
I mean, you do have another minute, but. Okay, thank you. I mean, you do have another minute, but I don't think you need it. Is there anyone online to speak to this item? So there were a number of people online, but no. They were gonna come in person. Got it, okay.
I have a couple of questions.
So questions from panel members?
So this house is an old heritage home with a large lot. And I'm just wondering, do you know how old this house is and whether there's any heritage protection on it at all?
Uh, no, I did check on the heritage websites. And this, this, this house is not registered as a heritage building.
Okay, do you know how old the property is? Do you know how old the building is, the structure?
I have no idea, but I guess would be, I would say this, this is built roughly around the early nineties.
Early nineties?
Oh, no, 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 my bad, my bad, my bad. Early nine hundreds.
It's not early nineties, no. It's an older home than that. Okay, I just, I was curious, that's all. It's unfortunate. Anyway, thank you.
Any other questions? I'll take it into committee then? Any discussion or is anyone ready? Just like to note that there are only three variances being requested for each of the houses and no interior side lot setbacks, as was often the case with these severance proposals.
Yeah, and the applicant did provide a lot of similar developments in the neighborhood and we've approved a couple of those recently. So on that basis, I am going to move a motion for approval, as I do believe the applications for consent and variance meet the four tests subject to the ECS transportation and tree protection forestry conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Dalton. Is there a second here? Yeah. Okay, Ross, thank you. Mr. Ross, sorry, Mr. Ross. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, so it carries on a split decision, three to two. Thank you to the applicant and the agent.
Just so we don't forget, Mr. Chair, can we try doing the refund request?
No, they can wait. Let's do the next item. We tried and yeah. I'll, we'll do that at the end. We told them we'd do it at the end. We've got another item. Let's do that item. People have been waiting here the whole morning. Sorry, let me just, just making some notes. Okay, item fifteen. Twenty, two twenty one and two twenty three Carlingview Drive. This is an application to obtain consent to sever the property into two lots and to create various easements and rights of way. There are, there is an arborist report. There was comments from transportation which have since been withdrawn. TRCA is asking for a deferral. And Mike?
Yes, that's me. Thank you. Mr. Chair, do you want me to speak to the deferral request first? As you said, in terms of the order of operations here.
Okay. Sure. That's, that's fine.
Okay. So just for the record, my name is Mike Drawr. I'm a planner and a partner with Bowsfields and my address is three Church Street, Suite 200. So in terms of the deferral request, we, we did note, oh, I wish one of the notes, sorry, but we did submit a response letter, response letter to the TRCA. Hopefully you're able to review that. The reason for the request from the TRCA is that the setbacks on to the Woodbine Golf Club lands and the interpretation that they're taking is that what's proposed here as part of this application is the creation of a new lot would be considered development within a regulated area. I think it's important just to bring us back to what's actually being proposed, which is this is not a new plan of subdivision with new housing and new buildings. This is one of those really simple applications where we have two existing hotels. The proposal would sever them in, into two properties and allow them to operate essentially as we're operating right now and have operated essentially in the same way for the last twenty five years or more. But just to allow them to be, to operate as two separate properties and allow one to be conveyed. There are only three total variances being proposed in order to legalize the lots and permit the severance. And they have nothing to do with any new construction, any new, any site planning and site alteration, any works or anything of that sort on the site, because again, no construction or new site planning matters at all are being proposed. What we're asking for is just to recognize existing conditions. And the variances relate to a setback from a driveway, which will be the new lot line to the North Hotel. And then two variances, one for each property related to the existing parking spaces. They're essentially built up to a retaining wall and that retaining wall will, is sort of the natural severance line between to the two lots. And they're built right up to it, so we're asking for variances to allow that condition to continue. And I'll note again that all of these variances have been supported by transportation review, by planning and so on and other divisions. We're, we're very sympathetic to conservation issues and we did speak with the TRCA prior to making the application and their recommendation was to speak with the city of Toronto who may have an interest in acquiring the, the piece of the rear of the site as part of the application. We engaged a city including community planning, urban forestry, Ravina Natural Features, Environment and Climate Division. And as part of that engagement, the city confirmed it did not have an interest in acquiring the site. And what they requested was that a natural heritage impact statement, a scoped version of that be submitted as part of the application. That was done. It may not have made it on to the AIC right away, but it was submitted with the application. We confirmed. And that we did submit it as soon as we noticed that it wasn't actually on the AIC on Thursday. But again, it was confirmed and it was submitted with the application. And I'll note that even outside of that being submitted as part of the application, Ravina Natural Features and Urban Forests three have a memo confirming that they have no objections to the application and are not requesting a deferral. They specifically said no deferral and no denial is being requested by them. But again, we did submit that natural heritage impact statement and that does confirm that there's no need for additional impact assessment because there's no site alteration or development being proposed. And in our opinion, there's no need to defer the application and we would ask the committee to hear the application today to deal with the severance and the three variances that are being requested.
You're gonna have to go through the TRCA process irrespective of what we do anyway.
Through the chair, there is a requirement for the applicable law certificate that was applied for and has been submitted to the committee that a requirement to get a permit is necessary. So all we're asking for is to not defer the application, continue with the application. We'll have to deal with the TRCA for sure. And that'll be a requirement through the process.
Okay. I have questions around one of the variances, but let's deal with the deferral first. So anyone have any questions or an opinion on the requested deferral from TRCA? I just note that we usually do not impose TRCA conditions at our hearings. Okay, can we have some discussion on the deferral then? I mean, there's separate process which will, can hold them up irrespective of what we decide.
Mr. Chair, given that the TRCA still can, still can have their process and make their own decisions independently, I would move not to defer but to continue, given that there is a, an opportunity for TRCA to take their own process.
Thank you, Ms. Public. Is there a second here for that? To, to not defer. Is there a second here for that? So I can't second the motion, in other words. Okay. Yes, but I stand silent. So if there is no second to that motion, I'm gonna have to declare it failed. Okay. All in favor of proceeding then? Okay, so we're gonna proceed.
Okay, but you have, you used up most of your five minutes.
That's okay. I, I think our, my main issue anyway, we can think, pull things out through questions. Let's do it that way. So my, my issue is that transportation is essentially telling us to refuse this. I mean, it's not a, they're not giving us a, a condition, a recommendation. They're basically saying
No, no, they, there was a follow-up email.
Oh, right, right, okay.
Yeah, through the chair, it's helpful. There was an original engineering review memo.
And, and that was mentioned to me and then I forgot, okay. I withdraw my question. All right. So based on that, are there any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, is anyone ready for a motion? There's my note saying, don't ask the transportation.
Mr. Chair, there is no longer a transportation issue.
Correct.
Okay. On that basis, and I note that there is a, well, there are a number of departments that have conditions and I'll leave that to our group to sort out. I move to approve on the basis that the application meets the four tests and I'll note that ECS and natural heritage has some comments. Transitation's on board. I think TRCA may have some further comments in the future and on that basis I move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Public. Is there a second here?
So you're including the ECS conditions, correct? Yes.
There was an MTO, but it was just an advisory, boat signage. So I don't know if that need
That was, sorry, I just, it's an advisory comment. We're not going to tie that to that.
If I may speak, I'm not sure if you're in committee.
Committee, they're in a motion.
So on that basis, I will second that motion.
Okay, thank you, Laura. All in favor? Okay, it's unanimous approval.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Someone can find Bill now? I think I've seen one before, yeah. Okay, our next item on the agenda, if we can continue on, we have a request for a refund. I think we tried reaching out to them before, but no one seemed to be there.
Hi, my apologies. This is Rosemary Chapada, the homeowner.
Okay, so this is for five Dornoch
Yes.
Drive and
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so give us your pitch.
So I, thank you, thank you for listening to this this morning. So the order to comply, well, I'm here today to ask for your consideration in refunding the penalty portion of the committee of adjustment fee that was charged. The order to comply was issued because the inspector that visited thought that the space excavated under our porch was being turned into a room, which is not the case. And so as described at the committee of adjustment hearing back in May, I believe it was May, it's being used as a cold cellar, cold storage.
Is a cold cellar not part of GFA and part of occupied space?
So I, I, I can only go off of what the committee mentioned that day. They, they agreed that it was, there was no change in footprint and there was support from a neighbor. And so they did say that it was a very minor variance and approved. They were, they, they, it sounded like to me that day, and apologies, I, I am not an expert in this, but it did sound to me that day that it was different than what was suggested of the, like a type of room that the inspector thought it was. And then in addition to that, the permitted drawings that were, that were sent to the city and approved by the city did show the excavation under the porch on, so I think there may have been a discrepancy. And so at least in a portion of those drawings, it did show the excavation. And they were permitted and approved for our builder to work off of. So I did request to, like go through the refund request process and it was suggested to me to come to committee to request a partial refund.
I, I think what's at issue is you're claiming that you submitted the same drawings for permit and then the same drawings to committee, but staff are telling us that those drawings are not the same. That what was submitted for permit did not show a cold room or covered porch.
But, so they, they did, like our permitted, the drawings that we have with a permit do have a covered porch and show that there's, like there's excavation under that covered porch.
And did it label what the excavation is to be used?
Like cold storage, just storage. It was just a storage. And that's, so that's why
But was that indicated on your drawings?
No, Mr. Chair.
I believe so.
We've looked at the plans. I've confirmed now, the issued permit plans showed it clearly as unexcavated, which is why the response from our director was not to issue the refund. The building inspector rightfully issued an order to comply. If there was an issue with an order to comply, that would have been the time to deal with the inspector and to say, hey, our plans show this as being excavated. It doesn't. The plans clearly say unexcavated.
And no reference
And that's why an OTC was issued.
And no reference to cellar or anything on those plans?
No.
Got it. Thank you.
Unfortunately, we don't have access to the building permit plans. We do have access to the drawings that you brought to committee and I think I was actually at that committee hearing, which show that yes, you have a cold room and yes, you're going to extend or cover that porch. And we thought that was a minor variance and we've approved that before. That doesn't mean that, and that doesn't prove what was on the building permit drawings. When I looked up your building permit application, it was, there was no mention. I mean, the cold room was a revision that was added after you came to committee. I mean, if you want
No, because the drawings that they, so I, I
So if you want So if you, if you, if you wanted to convince us that we should refund this, then you should have provided us with a copy of the permit drawings.
I did attach them to, I did send to Barbara Bartasik on June twenty sixth and Kyle Noke, apologies if I'm mispronouncing.
The permit drawings that show a cold room?
Yes, I, I, and I, in the email to them.
And what we do have before us is a letter from Kyle and it's dated July twenty ninth. And he's saying in about the fifth, sixth paragraph with respect to the circumstances associated with the order to comply, staff have reviewed the original plans that form part of the building permit and note they appear to be different than those submitted to the committee in support of the minor variance application. So the changes made to the development appear to have resulted in the order that was issued and revisioned building permit that requires zoning variances. So there seems to be a disconnect between the two drawing groups, CFA and building permit that we don't have before us, but clearly staff have reviewed it and determined there is a disconnect between the two. and determined there is a disconnect between the two.
But the true point is, the fee that was charged that the applicant is asking for a refund was the correct fee because there is an order to comply. So we have not made an error. That is the fee that was imposed by council and that was charged to the applicant. The applicant is asking for the OTC portion of the fee to be refunded.
Yeah, and, and, and we've had situations where applicants have come before us, um, where they submitted their application before the OTC came out and then they did it at the regular fee price. So I can understand the applicant um, wanting to get that straightened out. But you can't pretend that you did one thing on the drawings and then something else on the other drawings.
No, 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 absolutely. And, and I, I understand that. It's just, and the, like, what I've submitted to Kyle and Barbara do show a cold room. Like, I'm looking at the email now. I don't know if, um, like, it shows, it shows right here, cold room.
So the plans submitted for your committee of adjustment application
Cold room.
Do show the cold room. But what I'm saying, the permit application that you originally submitted, where the order to comply was issued, does show that it's unexcavated. So that's why.
Makes sense to me, the reason that doesn't make sense, and I, I apologize, is our builder only went off of the permitted drawings from the city. So they're, they didn't do this without drawings, like, they used these drawings that I sent on June twenty-sixth.
But then an order would not have been issued.
Then they.
But that was the problem. That's.
Then your issue, then your issue, then your issue is actually with the building inspector if you feel he's made an error.
Right, but they, so they did take it up with the building inspector and they said we had to go through this process. And to be honest with you, when I spoke with Kyle, he did say that oftentimes these get rejected and then are sent to committee in the forum that we are today to bring this forward. So it does, like, this seem, in my, this is the first time we've ever done a build. This seemed like regular due process from what I've been told from the city. Because it has, like, the drawings, the drawings that were permitted by the city and used to build.
The plans for your committee drawings are what you've provided and they show it as a cold room. The issued building permit plans clearly show that area as unexcavated. That is why the inspector issued the order to comply. There's, there's no arguing it. We can't deny what we're looking at.
So the, 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 the drawings that I sent in on the email, June twenty-sixth, that I know to be the permitted drawings are, are not, that show the cold room, are not the permitted drawings?
That's the second permit. You applied for a building permit, then you applied for a revision to that building permit to show the cold room. So if you submitted the revised drawings with the cold room, yes, they'll show on there, but that's not what, but is that what was submitted for the original building?
They would not have issued the building permit in that case.
Because you would have needed the minor variance. Did you, did you come to, you got the building permit originally without coming to committee, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so that's, that's what happened. It should have been showing as excavated and it would have sent you to committee in the first place.
Okay. Okay, I.
Can we have a motion, members?
Yes, so with that, I'd move a motion, um, and I don't like to do this, but based on the information that we have before us uh, for refusal of the refund.
Is there a secondary for Bill's motion?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay, Nadia, Nadia's second? All in favor? Oh, sorry, you're in favor of the refusal? Okay, so the motion passes to refuse the refund then.
Who was opposed?
You in favor or opposed?
Refund?
Yeah.
I'm in favor of not having the refund.
Okay, so, sorry, it's unanimous then.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, back to the top of the agenda. Let me just fix. Let me just find my, my notes again. Oh, I don't know, can't find it. It doesn't matter. It's twenty-four Ashwood Crescent and um, the applicant was Mister David.
Uh, good afternoon, Mister Chair. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, so I think, have you clarified your numbers and what you actually need from us?
That's correct. So uh, what's included in the forty-one point nine percent is uh, the deck, the deck right next to the pergola, which is um, twenty-six point fifty-four square meters. Uh, the deck at the rear of the house, which is um, seven point zero four square meters and the, uh, the shed, which is uh, six point forty-seven.
Okay, so what, what you didn't include previously is the existing deck.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, so, so the numbers add up now.
Yep, that's right, Mister.
So you're at the three forty-four point seven two square meters at forty-one point nine percent, correct?
Yep, that's right.
Okay. Well, then on that basis, I would move a motion for approval, as I believe the application meets the four tests and there are no conditions.
Thank you, Mister Dalton. Is there a secondary?
I can second that motion.
Thank you, thank you, Laura. All in favor? Yeah, that's unanimous approval. Okay, I think that concludes all the business portions that we had. Um, is there another motion?
And since I have my microphone on, I'll make the motion to adjourn this meeting at twelve thirty-three PM.
Thank you, Ms. Alderson.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. We finished quicker than I thought.
Thanks, everybody.
After the initial start, yes.